AM. ROCOM.
Judge.
Present.
Commissioner.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. 1.3 Pledge of Allegiance and Salute the Texas Vai.
Good allegiance to the Vai, the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, for which we have a God, and for whose liberty we testify. I'm in the Texas Vai, I'm in the United States of Texas. I want to speak on that. Why would it be?
Testimony over the present, if you're advising you are presenting before the commission court, you are under oath. Public comments. I do have one public comment just for purposes of keeping the community and the public informed. We were scheduled for a joint meeting with the city of Carrizo Springs regarding the MOU that is pending with the city and also issue regarding the landfill. However, this morning, we were advised by the city manager, Mrs. Salia Garcia, that the city unfortunately had to cancel. So therefore, there will not be a meeting this afternoon or a joint meeting with the city of Carrizo Springs. 3.1 Approval of Bonds.
No bonds.
There are no bonds. 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Guerrero Perez for the month of June 2025.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I jumped. Thank you. I see 1.6, it's because it's so close to the public comments. 1.6 Approval of Minutes of Meeting, July 14, 2025.
Subject to no correction, so may it be?
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jose Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 2, excuse me, JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Guerrero Perez. Do we have any questions of Judge Perez?
There's an increase, which is good.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion?
That's, um, they were able, or did they use it all the temporary more?
We already have it set up.
No, no, but, uh, Curly, did they need it or?
No, they did contact us. They contacted us. They would have utilized it if they, if they had.
I, I, when they mentioned it last time.
Yes, sir.
I was just following my thought. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Judge, you were going to say something?
Yes, um, I wanted to add these out and take the opportunity. There's been some misinformation circulating about my office, that my office is doing illegal activity with a school supply drive. And I wanted to, to clarify that. I went ahead and contacted the Texas Justice Court Training Center, which is the attorneys for the JPs. Justice, Justice, all over the state of Texas offer community service. And, and they do it in such areas as donations to the women's shelter, the food pantry, school drives, hygiene, nursing homes. So I presented to you a letter that was on the question board from Amber Meyer, the attorney for the Texas Justice Court Training, saying that we cannot force someone to do community service or ask them to donate, but if they wish to do so, then my court is allowed to do it. It is not illegal to do such activities. I know that some elected officials have said that it is. And I've spoken to Mr. Gonzalez twice on two occasions, presented him the paperwork as well. I've met with him on Friday and I've also met with him last week as well, the following weeks, excuse me. Um, I presented him that. And I know that the reason that I'm bringing it up is because constituents have brought it up to my attention that they're hearing that other individuals, elected officials, and employees of the county are saying that I am doing illegal activity. It was such an office that an individual called and they told that constituent that my office was doing illegal activities and that I was doing something against the law.
Hold on, Judge.
So I'm going to be, hold on.
Ms. Judge Mart, I don't know Judge Mart, she has his reading.
In reference to that, please don't get involved in my office. I hate rumors. If you're referring to me, Judge.
Uh, yeah, your secretary.
There's rumors because I got a note too from Mark Zuniga, says staff attorney. And I was informed back in the trainings, if you don't mind this.
Well, I would prefer you wait until I'm done because this is my time.
Okay, well, that's fine. But just don't involve me in your conversation, please.
I get.
Go ahead, Judge.
I hate that.
His secretary told the individual that my office is doing.
I'll say it, Commissioner. Hold on, Judge Martinez, you'll have your opportunity. Go ahead, Judge.
So I did, um, contact the Texas Justice Court Training Center. There are judges all over the state of Texas that do community service in this form and fashion. Even donating blood is considered a community service. Anything that is in the greater good of our community. I'm not doing community service for my personal gain so that I can say that I did it. I'm doing it for the community. I've done it in the last eight years with prior administration and now. And there's never been an issue. I'm not doing it again for personal gain. I've always done it for the community. I've done it to represent and help all the individuals of different county in any form and shape, the child welfare board, the women's shelter, the school, the churches. Anybody that needs assistance, we provide that. Even some of our offices have been able to use that to give as community service as well. So.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll can tell you from, on my standpoint, Judge, Mr. Perez and I jointly, for full transparency, were advised, and that came from Mr. Gonzalez, as you're aware, the county attorney, who advised Mr. Perez and I that your office was conducting illegal activity by receiving donations in lieu of court costs and fines. So his, the reason why Mr. Gonzalez brought it to my and Mr. Perez's attention was because he felt that the county was losing money in the sense that instead of these individuals paying for fines and fees, they were donating items and then your office was submitting the items on saying they were from your behalf. And he said that that wasn't true. So, um, I, I don't know what other rumors or what other comments or sidebars were, are being made. I can just tell you that Mr. Danny Gonzalez, the county attorney, had approached me and Mr. Perez about that situation. But I'm sure you're aware of that because we did speak to you. So I do want to make it clear to the commissioners' court that I did have, Mr. Perez and I did have a conversation with Judge Perez. And that was because Mr. Gonzalez had advised us that what her office was doing was wrong.
And I provided both of you the statutes after that. I never received anything from Mr. Perez. I asked him for whatever Mr. Gonzalez had sent him. I never received it. So I met with Mr. Gonzalez twice. I gave him the same information. My, there's no mandatory revenue generations for my court. There is no legal requirement for the JP's office to generate specific amount of revenue to really open to fund his operation. My duties are very clear. Magistrations, courts, overseeing court, dispensing justice. That's what my duties are first and foremost. I'm not a money-making machine. And most of you know this, y'all all went to training and you've heard that phrase, that justice and peace are not money-making machines. If I can offer help to the constituents by offering their community service and they choose to do so, by all means, I will allow it. I'm not going to make them pay a fine that they're not able to. If we are able to help them, why wouldn't I? We are helping the county by disposing cases, the individual himself, providing to the community. What, what, what is, if it's for the greater good of the community, it is clear, you say it's clear that it is not illegal. So I just wanted to bring that forth to commissioners' court. Again, my office is not a money-making machine. It is not based on the JP's office to generate money and pay salaries for the whole county. It is not based on that. I know that a lot of people had said that my office needed to be generating money, but that is my sole purpose. No, my sole purpose is to be here for the people and dispense justice, be fair and just. And the last 20 years in office, I have conducted my office with fairness, with respect, integrity. And I think most of you know this by now, that I would never jeopardize the position of myself as a JP to do something illegal. My office, my staff, or the county have given it to bring any kind of shame or disrespect to my office.
Ma'am.
Go ahead.
Judge, I, I just wanted to say something real quick. And this is just pricking my opinion. I feel that you've been a fair judge in the time that you've been a judge and you've done a lot for the community. Your office has done a lot for the community. And my opinion is, like I said, this is just my personal opinion. If you have a documentation that shows and proves that your process is legal, you know, you are an elected official. We're not in no shape or form, in any position to tell you how to do your job or even advise you how to do your job. I think it's up to the discretion of each elected official on how they conduct business as long as within its legal standards. And, you know, if you spoke to our county attorney and, and you've got the supportive documentation to support what you just stated, you know, it's up to you. Just to be honest with you, that's just the way I look at it. If, as long as you're not doing anything illegal or your office is not doing anything illegal, if you're doing things to help the community, like you said, there's people that cannot afford to pay $1,800 citation. And unfortunately, it just happens to a lot of people. That they don't go out there looking to get a ticket, but if they do, get a citation, it happens to all of them. And if you can help in any shape or form and if it's legal, you spoke into the county attorney, it's, that's your object. And I respect whatever decisions you make within your office.
Thank you. I contacted the Attorney General's Office on, on this as well. I've spoken to the Texas Justice Court Training Center with our attorneys. My staff was in a training two weeks ago when all of this started and they spoke to other judges that do this throughout the state of Texas. So that if I'm doing this illegally, then I guess every other judge in the state of Texas that offers community service is doing something illegal. But as far as I'm concerned, the Training Center has advised me that I'm not doing anything illegal. And that's who I look towards along with Mr. Gonzalez because I do refer to the county attorney on many questions when it comes to the legality. And I did confirm with the Training Center that it is legal. I provided you the paperwork. And at this point, I know that Mr. Judge, you better and I are going to continue to do this. And we only do three times out of the year such events. The rest of the time, we do collect revenue. And I don't foresee us changing unless something else happens or the law changes. I don't foresee us stopping doing this, Judge.
My, myself, I, my office, I know we generate money.
Judge, may you please come to the.
Okay. On, on my behalf, I know that the county might, might be losing some money because of we're doing this. But me, I'd rather help a needy family than generate money for the county. That's me.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring that information in and bring awareness that I did reach out to the attorney, the Attorney General's Office and the Texas Justice Court Training Center to do that. I did reach out to Mr. Gonzalez. I did sit down with him and speak with him last week. Actually, I talked to him twice. So I did give him the information as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
3.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Esquivel for the month of June 2025.
Good morning.
Morning, Judge.
Judge, Commissioner, not only do we do this during the back to school, we do it for Thanksgiving and Christmas. And you should see the faces of those families when we go out there and eat turkeys or whatever and then toys during, during the Christmas holiday. But we do that also. Just something I'd like to bring up. Sorry, Judge, blow it. No, that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Questions of Judge Esquivel?
Who can you approve?
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
3.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Letizia Hernandez for the month of June 2025. Good morning, Judge.
Morning, Judge.
Questions of Judge Hernandez? If there are no questions, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. 3.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of June 2025.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Good morning. Huge increase.
I know, I saw that too. Questions of Judge Martinez?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Your Honor, with all respect to Judge Perez, if he likes to do those things, you gotta bear in mind that we work for the state of Texas. We don't work for nobody else, just for the state of Texas. A lot of those things are considered political things, influences. But the only reason that I don't do it is because my clerk asked me if he wanted to do that. I said, "No." Tia is an attorney, a president of the Texas Justice Court Training Center. She said, "No, you can't be doing those things." Who's doing that? I said, "No, no, just a question if we can." She told me, "No." And for those reasons, I don't do it. I got ahold of Mark Zuniga, who's a staff attorney too. I have a, I have a paper here, if you don't mind reading it. If you, if you don't mind reading it, it's about, uh, obviously.
So according to the staff attorney, Mark Zuniga, what this says is that, um, there has to be caution in doing it. The problem you have is a judicial code of conduct. His response to Judge Martinez says, technically, if you grant someone, and I'm reading the verbatim from what it says here. Technically, if you grant someone deferred disposition, you can give them any reasonable condition. That could include making a donation to a charity. Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 45A 303. Additionally, if someone is ordered to do community service, they can be ordered to perform work at a nonprofit or other organization that provides services to the general public that enhances social welfare. Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 45A 254C. I don't know if that would include making a donation of some sort. The problem you have is a judicial code of conduct. I don't know if having to donate and donate to a charity or choice is in compliance with the Code of Judicial Code of Conduct. You may need to ask the State Commission on Judicial Conduct about that thing. Otherwise, you making, donating money or time to an accepted charity of the virtue disposition. Mark Zuniga.
Ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
From other who's here, basically, doesn't it, Judge Martinez, from what I, from what I just heard, from what it's read, it's, it's saying that he doesn't know what the, what the process might be. But Judge, we have little follow the process. And if she was told that it was okay, then it's all right within the law. Because from here, we think you might want to ask the State Commission Judicial Conduct about that sort of thing. The only reason is.
I feel, I feel that she followed the process. The county attorney had a concern on it. And she, she made the effort of finding out what it takes to donate, if it's legal or not legal. This gentleman here is just stipulating. To me, he's just giving an opinion that he doesn't really know how about the process.
If it's allowable or not.
Right. But from my, again, with Judge Perez, he had done all the proper procedures to.
And it says, uh, in reference to judicial conduct too, right?
Right. So.
I think that, I think this is more of a issue, this is more of an issue in regards to the ethical part. Because from my distinct understanding is that it's an allowable, it's an allowable condition of community supervision based on what I'm reading. On a legal standpoint, he's, Mr. Zuniga is just advising that you get with the State Commission regarding the judicial conduct as, in terms of the ethical part of it. Not necessarily that it's illegal to utilize this code to get donations. It's saying that according to what I read in the code, that those donations must be made to a nonprofit or another organization that enhances the social welfare of the general public. So I don't think per se, the accepting donations in lieu of community supervision is illegal per the criminal code. It's just saying as an elected official, as a judge, because the judicial code of conduct, as you know, applies to JPs, county judges, district judges, court of appeals, the judicial branch. It's just saying to be careful on how you go about that because in, on that sense of it, you could kind of get into muddy waters in terms of how you're going about it. So I don't think it's illegal per se to accept donations in lieu of those fines and fees or to accept donations as a condition of probation.
What does it say on that top, on that deferred dispositions? What is it?
For Judge.
Right on top, and it starts, deferred disposition.
Technically, if you grant someone deferred disposition, you can give them any reasonable condition.
Okay. You gotta be careful with CDLs because in JP courts, we don't allow no deferred dispositions. If you have tickets, that people have CDLs. JP courts, we do not do deferred dispositions or deferred adjudications.
And that's fine, Judge. Can you not order the court leaves? And that's fine, Judge. Again, we as a court can't delegate how you do your job. If you don't want to take donations, if you do not want to give deferred dispositions, you have every right not to do that. I'm just telling you, reading it from a legal standpoint as an attorney, and this is not even as a county judge, this is as an attorney, reading this, this tells me that as per the Code of Criminal Procedure, you are allowed to give reasonable conditions. Reasonable conditions could be asking for a donation or not asking for a donation. If the person tells you, "I can't pay for it, but I can give you a donation." They can give you a donation of a toy or whatever it is that's collected. However, the judicial code of conduct comes into play where as judges, we have to be careful how we disseminate that stuff because if we're, we're doing it, going back to your comment about politics, that's where it comes in. Because if you're, you're, you're doing it on behalf of your office or saying you collect, you, you're donating yourself, you can run into some problems with the ethics of the judicial code of conduct. So that's why this particular Article 45A 303 says that they can be ordered to perform at a nonprofit or the donations could be given to a nonprofit or other organization. And so those are things that we just have to look at in terms of the judicial code of conduct.
The Gwyneth.
Exactly. So I think here more the issue lies, if anything, according to what Mark Zuniga submitted to you, is just being wary and being careful on how you execute giving the donations and how you say the donations or who are they coming from. Because you don't want to run into, like I said, that gray area regarding the judicial code of conduct. Because judicial code of conduct doesn't apply to the commissioners or other elected officials. It's specifically for judges.
No, but I don't worry too much about that because I don't, I don't even care about doing that. Honestly, I was sworn in and work for the state of Texas. So anything we get, we get, we collect for the state of Texas. When we were sworn in, that's what I do. So that's the way I see it. I don't, I've never done it before and I'm not going to do it. It was just a question that my clerk asked me and that's all. I don't do, I don't do that stuff. But she said, "Why?" I said, "'Cause Tia told me not to." Tia's a staff attorney, president, she was the president of the organization. And then I called Mark and he raised me all this day with the judicial, for those reasons, I don't deal with it. I don't want to get involved in that. I'm getting ready to retire in a term, one more term, and I don't want to deal with that things. I work for the state and I'm going to collect for the state as I was sworn in to do so.
And, and, and I think generally, looking at the documentation that Judge.
I don't like to do those things for political reasons or anything.
And, and that's fine.
That's a lot of people see it like that too.
That's fine, and that's your opinion? And, and I can't change that?
It is my opinion and I stick to it.
And, and I respect your opinion. And I think that generally, in the past, reading on the information that Judge Perez submitted to the court, I think historically speaking, it seems to me that in the past, it says here, it was actually a no-no. This is what this is in the past. However, House Bill 541 changed that. And now it allows for you to be able to do that.
That's fine. If they're allowing everything, it's fine. Judge Perez, I apologize to you, but please keep my office out of whatever your thoughts are about it. We don't deal with it and we're not going to deal with it as long as I'm there.
Thank you, Judge.
Any other questions before? Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, can I just add that whenever we do community service, we don't offer the deferred disposition.
Thank you, Judge.
It's a conviction. I ran that through Mr. Gonzalez and they're not allowed to be on probation if it's a conviction as far as a probation. So anytime someone donates, it is a conviction. They're not deferred, it's not dismissed. That would be an issue if it was dismissed. I clearly stated, I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez and that's what his concern was. If it's, if it's dismissed, then it's an issue. But it's a conviction at the end, it's on their record. So I don't give deferred disposition and I'm going under 45.09 of the Code of Criminal Procedures.
Thank you. 3.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from District Clerk, Ms. Marisa Salagonzalez for the month of June 2025.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Questions of Ms. Gonzalez? Ms. Gonzalez, I'm not done, I have a question. Ms. Gonzalez, where are we in regards to felony indictments for the district attorneys on this?
The month of June, Judge, we had a total of 62 indictments.
And I know that Commissioner Talamata is usually the one that likes to ask you, but what's the status in regards to the court still being conducted over at the old courthouse?
As far as I'm concerned, we continue to have court over there. We will continue to do so until the elevator issue at the historical courthouse is resolved.
Judge, we've been getting emails on that.
Judge, we've been getting emails on that. You can get a copy also. This company has postponed it 30, 30 days, 30 days. So that's the only thing that's lacking.
And I can attest to, I can attest to what Commissioner is saying, and I had a brief conversation with you the other day, that unfortunately, the elevator, it kind of seems like a faraway dream, if you will, because it doesn't seem like there's any, any official update in terms of that it's going to be fixed.
They had it for July, but then they postponed it again. And the only thing we are working on is on those air conditions. We already contacted a couple of companies to place their proposals so we can take care of it. The lighting has been fixed, man. I talked to the judge about that. What was happening is that they were using too much watts on those, although, because it's 10 lights per switch, so it was overloading the breakers and it kept on going, making them go up and burning the switches. So what we did is we left the judge, these bright lights and the rest of the courthouse, there's about three, three rows of those bright lights and the rest are LED lights, 60 watt. So there's enough lighting so they can see, but they're not going to say, oh, I tripped, it's too dark, or I can't see what I'm writing. I was up there, just at the lights.
Was that an issue before, Commissioner? They couldn't...
It was popping the breakers. Because each, each box, the examiner, man, has about eight or 10 little bulbs and they draw too much water.
No, I was asking because you said that they can't say that they're going to trip and fall. Was that an issue before?
No. I'm just saying, since I changed the lights, now that I changed the light, it's bright anyway with the LEDs. So the attorneys can see their desk and all that, so we took care of that lighting issue. The only thing is, we're going to just get, we're going to cook for those ACs and the elevator keeps getting pushed back and back. I'm on it and that's as far as we're at.
One other question, Ms. Gonzalez. I know we got a phone call last week in regards to, I believe court was held or conducted through 9:00 PM. What was the, I guess, was there issues in terms of like it being held so late there? Like in terms of, or security or? Because I got a phone call from the district attorney's office and they were concerned about, like it was dark, early dark, and somebody might have tripped, almost tripped over equipment. That was like, was there a reason why it was held till 9:00 PM or?
I'm not sure, Judge. I do know that it was a heavy docket that day. We had motions to suppress schedule for that day. Those usually take anywhere between 45 to an hour long. And so there's, there's several things, you know, that pushes the docket back. One of them being, we have defendants that don't speak the English language. And so the court has to contact someone with the OCA, you know, to provide an interpreter for the court. And those cases take a very long time. Like I said, we had over 60 cases on the docket that day. And so, yes, it, court was, was, you know, held till 9:00. Unfortunately, that's things that happen in that court.
And do you have your staff there?
Yes, I did. One of my clerks stays till the end.
Other questions?
Do you all have security there?
We did have the BAFIF, the court BAFIF.
And really, the BAFIF is a person that stands next to the judge? So there was no court, like, there was nobody from the sheriff's office?
Yes, we were there and I...
Um, I don't know.
I can attest that I was there personally and I also had two other deputies there. I have deputies with me all day.
I suppose you can say, was there times?
There was deputies all day.
They have, they definitely still?
I know that we did assist Ms. Gonzalez. For the record, Commissioners, I am short-staffed with security guards, but I was able to send our code enforcer, Mr. Gonzalez. He did assist also Ms. Gonzalez with as much as securing as he could possibly do. But we, I know that the district attorney's office contacted my office because they had concerns about the location, being there at 9:00 PM. So I just wanted to hear your side, because I, like I said, I did get phone calls concerning that. And I think it's starting to become an issue, because I'm getting phone calls and my staff can tell you from constituents as well, so. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve Mrs. Gonzalez's report.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
3.7 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from County Clerk Ms. Claudia McDaniel for the month of June 2025. Ms. McDaniel, I do want to applaud you. I'm looking at the numbers and I find pride that we've been increasing, this is something I talked to Mr. Pereira about, in regards to County Criminal Court, the number of fees that we've been collecting and the number keeps growing. And I do want to thank you in part for making your office very accessible to the criminal defendants that we have in court and that they are able to pay for their fees on the day of court. And we can do that because you have made it accessible by bringing some of your staff here with the collection machines and equipment needed. So I do want to thank you, because Mr. Pereira and I were looking at the numbers historically in the past and our numbers have grown dramatically in how much money we've collected for this county. So thank you so much. And I also do want to say, Commissioners, that we did have a visiting judge here. There were several cases on which I had conflict of interest in and we had a visiting judge and they spoke very highly of Mrs. McDaniel and her office and how organized she had her files and her folders. So I do want to advise you that there's adjoining counties that have been very pleased at the way that the county clerk's office conducts criminal court and probate court.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Dimon County Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. David Donas.
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table. Oh, he's not going to be here, Commissioner?
No, he's, I don't think he will be.
Motion to table by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Excuse me. Motion carries. 3.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Restate Burn Ban Fire Department.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Do we need to table it? Can it be, can you discuss it since you're chief?
It's under his...
So then we won't have a burn ban right now?
Right, that was the date.
So just for the record, we won't have a burn ban right now?
But we still recommend that they get...
Of course, it's always recommended that way.
It's drawn here also.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.10 Discussion and Appropriate, excuse me, Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Victory Amnest for the months of May and June 2025.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Mr. Gonzalez.
For the month of June, we had a total of 231 calls and the breakdown was 71 in the city and 49 in the county. And then for the month of May, we had a total of 214 calls with a breakdown of 45 in the city and 47 in the county.
I'm confused on here on the city, you have a total 71, county 49?
Yes, sir.
On this last page.
That's for June, correct?
I'm trying to find on my...
June.
So for June, there was a total of 71 for the city?
Yes, sir.
And 49 for the county, okay.
So you only had seven transports for June. Even though he chose 28, he chose 21 refusals.
Yes. So there's really only seven?
Seven calls.
Seven, seven transports to the hospital, so...
For the county is what you're saying? Only seven?
All the trucks running and exit codes working?
So far, yes, so far.
No issues whatsoever?
None of them, that's my attention.
So just to clarify, what Commissioner Alonso Carmona is saying is that for the city, there was a total of 41 actual patients in the ambulance and then for the county, there was only seven?
That were transported to the hospital, correct, yes. So the call was made?
And that's for, that's for the month of May?
For the month of May.
For June, excuse me. Right? For June? Because May is, May's over here.
Do you all do a, I hate to say this is a service call, but is there a fee that you all charged and under you for that refusal?
Yes, sir.
So for the month of May, for county, there was only nine transports? And 29 for the city? I just want to make it...
From what, from what it looks like, yes, ma'am.
I just want to make it clear, because when you look at it on its face, when you, when you put county, we have a total of 47 and the city had 45, it looks like we had way more, but in reality, we only had nine transports while the city had 29.
The call, as far as the calls that were made, the emergency call was made, whether the transport was done or not was what the patient decided to go to the hospital. Correct. So let me, the number of calls is, number of emergency calls was 47 and then there was 45 emergency calls in the county and then out of that, the 19, 28 emergency calls total, 19 out of those were refusals in the county. And then 37 calls, emergency calls were made in the city and out of eight, eight of those were refusals.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.
3.11 Discussion and Appropriate Action Grants and Planning Probate Report April through June.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. No. Please do reach out.
Thank you. There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda.
Oh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
That, that group that came in for the fiber optic?
Yes.
We approved a letter of support through Commissioner's court on the last meeting. Had that, do you want that thing?
For the security or for the fiber optic?
For the fiber optic, I'm coming in from the...
That was already uploaded onto the grant. The deadline was the 22nd.
We did that a long time ago.
We didn't a long time ago.
Whenever it was due, after Commissioner's court, we approved the MOU.
After the last Commissioner's court?
This past Commissioner's court, it was on the last.
I'm just asking if they received the letter?
Yes.
Okay, just following up.
We were just trying to figure out, because Commissioner Talamante was telling her a different thing. Commissioner Talamante wanted to go meet with her and so there was a back and forth regarding yours and hers.
But we got it, it was submitted.
Thank you.
Judge, if I may look at my phone, I think I would like to share with Ms. Rodriguez. Two days ago, I posted it on our page, the fire department, that FEMA's nearly cutting a billion dollars for fire departments EMS and...
Emergency management.
Emergency management. So this is coming from up there. So remember I asked the gentleman, I don't know if you were there about FEMA and he said?
Yes, at the, at the meeting.
Their true word that FEMA was going to be there for everyone and I was adamant about it. FEMA was going to make cuts and have it, they were going to do away with it. Well, from what I see on the information that I asked, they gave me their word and heart and soul that it was going to be there. There was the emergency division department. Mr., being cut a lot of them, I saw the disaster in Peru, are familiar with it? Yes. FEMA hasn't even acted on that. North Carolina, we're still, they're still behind. So I know we don't have much, but other contact of representatives, but that's our job. But I can see that there's no, there's a bit of the true statement that they gave that it was going to be there for any disaster.
There was a news, a reporter, a messenger, a lady that came out stating that she lied to FEMA, she lost all her money and she received a $27 check.
You have to tear a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, but I was going to say that what people, a lot of people don't understand or realize is that with FEMA, you have to meet a certain threshold of damage and the county or the city that is saying that there is a natural disaster, it has to be like a million dollars for the state of Texas for it to be a natural, it's qualified for FEMA to even come down. And I don't think, I don't know, because I'm not an elected official in Kirk County or in the counties that were struck in by the floods, but my distinct understanding, if you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Rodriguez, when it comes to FEMA, there has, there's a certain threshold in the amount of damage that they'll come in to help.
Yes. So like with Tito, you have to resource, you have to use all your resources at the local level and then your... and then your mutual, and then you can go to the state. You can't just jump to the state, you have to have-
I think that thing is $100,000.
That's for TIDAM, yeah, for TIDAM. But for, for FEMA, it's like a million dollars, yes, a million dollars. Mm-hmm. So-
But still, to me, it's not, they're not coming.
Like I told Mr. Calmonas, if y'all guys come up or y'all see any grants that y'all guys are interested in, just like you did the B1, please send them my way so I can apply for them.
I would, I'll probably-
Did you have a, is your concern on the letter of support or what was your line of question?
A question to, it's a, it was just a follow-up question to see that, did they-
Yes.
Yeah, no, it was submitted, it was submitted last week, right? Because it was-
I will try to meet with you or reach out to you in regards to a grant for, for coffers that are run through governmental entities?
Yes.
For upgrades.
Okay, just give me a-
I saw it on the, on the web page, so, okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Also that, just, we're talking grants. The fire department got a grant again for the green, for the, of the insurance we have. And also they're going on the second round of grants for the fire department. And I thank Ms. Rodriguez for being expert, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.12, discussion and appropriate action, requesting assistance with burials, excavating, digging, drilling and forking of Comité de mejores materiales. Nobody here? Um, I did, Commissioner, there's no one to hear it, so we'll have to probably table it. But I did want to advise you guys that my office was trying to do some extensive research in regards to both the Mount Hope Cemetery in Guadalupe. And as of right now, we are being advised by the, the tax appraisal district that they are both public entities. However, we are running the search as recommended by the Attorney Keith Franklin regarding the Health and Safety Chapter Code, in which the law specifically says that if it's a public entity, the counties can go in there for purposes of excavating and closing holes, given that it is a historical marker. And as soon as we get that, we'll put it back on here. I, I don't know why I don't want to hear from the committee this here. But as soon as I get all that information, I will definitely keep you guys abreast of the situation. But I did want to advise you that as per the Health and Safety Code and the local regulations of cemeteries, the Attorney General's opinion regarding county labor equipment on those properties, it looks to be that the county will need the exemption to allow for the county to open and close graves. However, I'm waiting to get the official run from the, um... No, next door?
Stewart.
Stewart title, so that we can confirm the ownership of the cemeteries. And I hope that at that point, based on the legal standpoint and the government code, which is law, that we can have a resolution to assist our constituents. Because at the end of the day, it's our constituents that are suffering. And I know that a constituent called our office last week. And it's my distinct understanding, they're increasing the price in what it's costing to excavate, to dig a hole for those that have deceased and to close it. And there's a lot of issues with that. Because as you all are aware, some people may possibly not be able to afford such a thing. And that's just so unfortunate. So I'm doing my best from our standpoint at our office to do everything that we can to obviously follow the law, but to find a resolution so you can all continue to excavate holes for those that are in need without having to suffer any legal ramifications.
Motion to table.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmonas to table.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.13, discussion and appropriate action, approval for road use agreement between Dimen County and Rose Courts, V E S, V E S S, Sam, Sun, C and T, renewables. Good morning.
Morning.
Excuse me?
I said, this is the area of Commissioner Talamontes. How many have questions?
Well, he was here the last time and there was some-
And then the concerns I got placed.
Exactly, there was the concerns. And then my distinct understanding, you guys corrected-
Took care of the issues.
The issues that were at hand at the time. And submitted the new documentation with-
There were several iterations going back and forth.
Correct. Go ahead.
I have a question for you, Judge. And I may be missing something here, but why is this document of an agreement necessary between your perm and the county if a road is a public county road accessible to anyone that needs to utilize it to get from one destination to another within? Why is this document necessary?
It's not that it's necessary, because you're right. I mean, the vehicles are straight vehicles, so we, by all purposes, can travel those roads. However, we understand that the equipment that we're gonna carry on those, or on the trucks are probably going to damage roads. I mean, we've, that's-
That, that was the issue.
This is what we've done for all the counties that we-
That was the issue that-
It was in the weight limit, what kind of weight are you gonna connect?
Um, battery container can be anywhere from 20 to 40 tons. Transformers are 160 tons.
150 tons?
160 tons.
Yes, sir. So while we don't have to have one, I mean, it's good practice to get one to come in there, to come in and request one from the county.
And I think Commissioner, and if you don't, if you can recall, another reason why we were gonna get into this MOU was that if there was any damages on the road, that Rose Courts was going to stipulate that they would pay for any of the costs to either reimburse the county to fix them or that they would find a contractor to fix the actual road. And if I'm not mistaken, there was some cattle guard or something to that effect?
Because the road, I mean, it's obvious, the road is basically rubber-based material.
Yes, sir.
The only actual material, the judge just mentioned, there is a 20-foot white cattle guard. And I say white, length, the width of the road itself. Now, length-wise, when you're traveling over it, it, I believe it's 10 feet in length, as you're approaching the portion. It's like, and, and other than that, it, I don't, it's not like it has asphalt or concrete, you know, that, that would sustain really damage. A road like that category, if it's, if it's rained, if it's wet, it's more likely gonna get damaged, even with 80,000 pounds, especially. People are using it on daily basis, vacuum trucks or whatever. But I was just wondering, I don't know, how, how, how does this make us liable or make you liable once the signatures are on?
Once the signatures, there's a bond in place for us to, there's a bond in place where we will-
So y'all are taking the liability?
Absolutely.
That's what this document is. I would, I would strongly suggest from a legal standpoint that we sign the document for purposes of protecting the county. Because if there is an issue with the road, this particular document details that Rose Courts is going to pay for any and all repairs. So it's not like we are going to, I mean, this is just an, and it's actually to our, to our advantage to sign it. Because it would cost the county nothing if there was a repair needed to be had, they would do it. The only concern I do have is that in reading the fine print, and I would just do that as an attorney, is that on here, you stipulate that you're going to use all county roads or the road used described herein, including two, but not limited to. You don't have an actual description of the property or the road that you're going to be used. So I would like that to be included. And we can approve this agreement here today contingent that you provide me a new agreement that stipulates the actual location of that road. Because I would be remiss to advise these commissioners to sign it when it says the use of all county roads. Because we're not necessarily agreeing to use all the roads. Is this that particular road that you guys are gonna use?
Yes, ma'am.
That is my advice, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Commissioner, one of the other things that, I don't know how much happens, materials they carry, if something spills on the county road, the county won't be able for any damages being on the county road.
Correct.
They will take care of it immediately as a process. And because you want to continue. If something ever happens to the county road, now if it goes off the county road, then it's between them and the landlord. The landowners, but on our part, we gotta make sure, even though it's a public road, we gotta make sure that everything is done properly.
Is there an alternative, is there an alternative to utilizing the cattle guard? Because on subsection-
That's an interesting, okay, so there is a cattle guard.
Because on subsection G, they stipulate that they're not going to use the cattle guard.
So that's-
I'm trying to figure out how are you gonna get to the other-
Water Loop is a pretty big, it's, that's the, on one part of the road near, I guess that's Highway 85, there is the cattle guard. However, our project is, I have to go down there. It's in Big Wells, it's considered, I'm gonna say something like 10 miles away from that cattle guard. I drove past it the last time we went out, the last Commissioner's Court.
I think.
I drove, I turned off, and the cattle guard was pretty, pretty close to the road. However, ours-
What do we do? Is that just be moving?
It's FM 1867?
Oh, it's off of 1867?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, there's-
It's coming, it's coming.
Well, no, I'm looking at it right here. This is where they're gonna be at, the cattle guards that cross. So it's away from you.
So are you going through Big Wells?
Yes, sir.
Or are you coming around the Barker Loop on the other side?
We're gonna take a left onto 1867.
On Grand Avenue?
Yes, sir.
This is 1867 and then follow the transportation line that's on there?
Yes, sir. And then there's a substation right there at 1867 and Barker Loop.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to worry about the cattle, you know, you're going through that cattle. Where would we end up with the cattle at the end?
Barker Loop?
It's Barker Loop, and it's just, it's, it's-
It's just further north.
And the cattle guard's on the other.
It circles, it circles.
Yes.
Circles, does it gate above the right end?
It pretty much goes in a circle.
I couldn't get past that gate. When I went down the cattle, when I crossed over the cattle guard, I tried to drive as far as I could to see if I could get to our project site. And I, there was-
I don't, I don't think it was actually, it maybe in the past, that road-
Was actually-
Probably would circle around.
Yes, sir.
But now the landowners somehow or another, maybe before my time, they were able to gate it in. Because there's a gate at the end of the one I'm talking about, where the cattle guard is at?
Yes, sir.
You drive to the end, it's a straight shot. You come across the cattle guard, call it halfway between. And then there's a gate to the butterfly ranch, which, unless you're the owner of the butterfly ranch, it works for the rent to take the-
I believe it's supposed to be over. I'm not, I'm, I know you're not getting there, but it's supposed to be up top.
That's, that's-
It, it meets with-
That's why, when you mentioned the last Commissioner's Court, it, it kind of turned us to, because we had never-
The Commissioner Talamontes had brought up about the cattle guard.
And that was something that you had specifically required, so we wanted to-
That's why they, they put it on the, it's in there in the subsection.
Yeah, we wanted to mention it, because that was something that, that you mentioned as well, but-
So this road that you're talking about is the one right at the substation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you take a right off of 1867? I don't know where we're going.
So Judge, do you like a description of-
Just a description of the, description of the-
Of the roads.
Of the roads of, so that we can make sure it's all encompassing. Because I don't want it to say use of all county roads.
And we can make that correction today?
Yes, sir.
And get it back to you and-
Have it signed, contingent that the Commissioner's Court approved. Do I have a motion?
Motion, uh, motion based on the stipulation that there's-
To include the description of the land. I have a motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmonas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Thank you. 3.14, discussion and appropriate action, approval for County Judge Monta Ponse, Ms. Talamontes, Commissioners Jose Uranda, Alonso Calmonas, Melissa Talamontes, Valeria Bucava to attend 103rd Annual CJCA Texas Conference on October 5th through the 19th August in Texas.
Send move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso.
Judge, I have a question. Mr. Talamontes is going to the straight now?
I'm requesting for her to be able to attend, to attend the Commissioner's part of it for the meetings. There's a curriculum on there for the judicial staff. And that's where I'm asking for her to be able to-
Is she, is she doing the trouble with that and all this stuff?
Yes, sir, she is.
She has a loan?
Excuse me?
She has a loan, so she's gonna get the-
She submitted, yes, she submitted. I have a question though for you, also on this one, Commissioner Uranda. Because our stay is, and the other Commissioner's stay is, on the rooms, is $915. But on yours is $2,018 for your room.
Are they in your room?
Excuse me?
It's a different hotel or just?
Excuse me? Can you come forward?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Uranda, yours is $2,018. But all the other commissioners and everyone else, even Miss Talamontes, is $900.
She didn't get the block. I don't think she got the block, that's why it's-
Oh, you didn't get the block rate?
The block rate?
The block rate.
It usually happens to me, I don't kind of look at it like it's like-
So it's, so it's $1,100 more?
Can you, can you, who have a registered? No, isn't that registered, registered, Commissioner?
No, Commissioner, because, uh, no. Most of the times, everybody does it way ahead of time. And if, if you don't, if you don't move, or whoever does the registration-
So let me understand this, we have a concern with the executive expenditure of my revenue?
No, it's a-
No, 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 let me figure. But, and I'm a Commissioner and I'm supposed to be going through this now, unless the court, or otherwise, it makes no difference to me. But Mr. Talamontes is not a Commissioner or Judge, and there's no concern about that expenditure?
No, no, and we're talking about the expenditure.
I don't think-
It has nothing to do with this, Talamontes.
I'm still here to listen to the-
And that one, I had done your register, your hotel way in advance. But I don't know if for some reason, when Melissa tried to go in there to register, you know, so they had to-
I have no control of that.
She had to cancel that one and do another one under her own, so.
I have no control of that much, sir, which I could, but-
But I had done your, your registration way within time, and it was that amount. So I don't know if okay, I'm the only one, Melissa did it, I don't know what happened along the way.
Yeah, see, and-
I'm just curious, because it was, the $2,000, I was like, that's a lot.
I asked Melissa too, and that's the only explanation she gave was that we weren't able to get a block room. And I asked her-
But she got her, locked it for you. That fee, I don't know why it was, it was canceled.
They probably canceled the original one, but she did.
Yes.
See, and I'm, and it creates confusion, because I don't even know why we were trying to, okay, if I was already booked, why was Melissa going back and-
Exactly, Mita had already booked it for you.
And just to let you know, I don't have any control of that, just because Melissa's the one that historically speaking, does all the reservations for, for me or for whoever it is that's going to train on our department. But by the same token, even, we've been in situations where they, I tell her, look, the email said it's open today, and she'll get on there and they'll tell her, there's only four rooms that on the block, because everybody attacks on that date.
I was just curious, because I didn't know that it was so much like $1,100 more. And so Mita had told me she had booked, she had, I know Mita had already booked it, so I don't know.
Honestly, Judge, in the past, I'm just gonna say, in the past, the former county judge had his executive, and whenever it was a training like this, she would do everything for all the-
Well, we thought it for you.
I understand, but that's, that's, she would do it for everybody, and everybody, she knew it-
Well, we, when-
Save rates, everything.
When, when we first came into office, Commissioner, just to make it very clear for you, that's how we were doing it, but then we were advised by the other commissioners that they wanted Flo to do it for them, so-
But I didn't, I didn't say Flo, it was just done like that.
So Flo does yours, right?
I was just barring myself, and Melissa's, I was, I'm the commissioner Talamantes.
So Mita-
And not, not start a, but you don't, you don't call Flo each other, and then you register, that way you can, you don't use Flo for anything that has to do with your thing.
No, but Mita had booked-
It's, it's Melissa, you-
And I always ask, I always get a very, Commissioner, this, this one's coming up, are you gonna register?
Yeah, no, she, she, she-
Yeah, I mean, she does what she can, but, that's why we always need to, ours-
No, no, so I'm just clarifying, because he says that Letty used to do them in the past, so that's how we were gonna-
Yeah, she can do for others.
That's how we were gonna do them, but we were advised that Flo would do them, so-
I don't know who does, I never said, I'm happy whoever does them. It doesn't matter to me who does it, it's Thomas, we, we go to the string.
Let me know, I mean, just something I can, I can book.
Mita can always book him for you, if y'all want her to, she, she has no problem with doing it, it's just that we, we had done it that way.
Well, dude, we're on record, I, I would rather you just, if, if it's a training that is gonna be commissioners and judges, if, if you don't mind, and if the judge is okay with it, or, cause it keeps it consistent and, and-
Well, no, I mean, and I've always told Ms. Hernandez, she, she's always booked, but I don't know what happened here, I was just wondering if something had happened, because Mita had already told me she had booked you at the $900 rate, so I'm not too sure if Ms. Medina-
I don't know, I don't know, but my reason, we're just gonna cancel, so I'm gonna pick another one, and the other one being in the block, but I don't know what-
But it's, so is he staying at the same hotel or is he somewhere else?
West One Two Cell.
Uh, for Commissioner Uranda, it says the San Luis.
No, oh, is it the Rio?
Yes.
Yes, the same hotel.
Did you do, what did you say?
Um, Rio, San Luis.
Yes, it's the San Luis.
I remembered we stayed at the, yeah, San Luis, it was the Moody Gardens.
Yes, it was Moody Gardens last time. Okay, Commissioner, I just, I mean, I didn't know if you wanted us to try to get you back the same rate, I don't know if we can still do that.
So we're waiting for you to leave your house.
Yes, ma'am, please, and I greatly appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. But seriously, Commissioner, if you don't need, Mita to book anything for you, you can advise her and she can, she can do it, she doesn't have a problem with it. for the month of June 2025, we'll start with precinct one, Commissioner Uranda.
Judge, we've been basically attacking the, the same issues within our county, which is a constant mowing, moving's range, which we're not going to complain about, we finished mowing one week and within two weeks we're back at it, cause the grass is just growing so, so rapidly. We have also encountered a lot of damages to Castle Road based on the rain and excessive amount of sand loads that are utilizing it. I think there was one constituent that did play something on the, on Facebook about, why don't they pay Castle Road and it be a diversion from 186?
I have read that.
Yeah, it is pretty much, I think I rented it like nine miles of road, and to be honest with you, one, just concerns is, say, a number of nights that it has on there, at this point, they're, they're having to drive at a controllable speed because the road is, is not asphalt, obviously. We all know that once you place asphalt in a road, we see it on a, a freight range road, they're, they're speeding it out, I mean, they will not stop, and I think it's, it'll probably increase accidents on several of the road. However, we have been working on that road, with hauling material and, and blading and rolling and compacting, so we have it up to par at this point, but basically that, that is what, what's been keeping us constantly busy, and not to mention, we have had a lot of, and I say a lot, over 10 people contact us in regards to brush in, in, within the city, to make a turn, and, and just this morning I had four calls, and I, before I, I knew that the meeting had been canceled, I did advise them that we were gonna have a meeting today, hopefully by the end of the day, the commissioners, the judge, and city councilman, and the mayor would have this result, and know what direction we're gonna head with this, but unfortunately the meeting was canceled, so we're just gonna have to wait, but it is a concern for the people that live in precinct one in the city , because the brush piles are accumulating drastically, it, it takes one, one basically ride through the, through the precinct, and it speaks for itself, it, it looks very-
Have we, have we had any discussion amongst the commissioners for us to utilize our landfill for that brush?
Not really. But they've been waiting for, for the, for the result of today.
Well, and let's just, you know, make that clear, I did put it in public comment, but just for the, for the record and make it transparent to whoever's watching live or whoever's here in the room today, that we've, I'd like to say that we've tried our best to get a meeting together to continue the communication and discussion, but it's not you commissioners that are not wanting to help, we just have to follow certain parameters, and unfortunately we're not gonna be able to, to meet if we can't have those mutual discussions.
Commissioner, on, on Castle Long, is it because of the construction they're going through there, or?
Is that a text off construction?
I would just think about-
The, the construction?
Is that text off construction?
Yes, so they're trying to avoid the, the, the light, you're right, that, that obviously has to affect it, but then also, a lot of fracking that they performed is on 2688, which is Bristol Boulevard, so they're gonna divert to Castle Long instead of coming in through Cari, so, because it's always a concern right there at the loop.
Yes, right here, yes.
And, and I know we brought this up to text up in whatever previous meeting.
When we met in the radio.
So it's, it's just, uh, just the whole, the whole scheduling of how it's taking place, it's basically dumping all the, the traffic on, on, and, and I'll be honest, I went out, I went out there a couple, last week and the week before that, to check on the progress, and you can see them turn that 90 degree, any of them, and they get after it, they wanna slow down.
There's, there's five curves on that road.
Five, five 90 degree turns.
On Castle.
Yeah, and they're not curves, they're, you, if you're there, if you can't pay, you probably have to do what you did on, what happened on freight range road, you have to go to a two minute stop, and then-
And then turn.
And they were, they were using, they were also using brown road.
All brown road.
Yes, they are using brown road.
They have to go, to come around, ended up at the sand.
And get away from- They were using brown road, great track, and then they would come out on sites.
They're putting our, our, those county roads that we have on that section of, of the county.
Commissioner Uranda, by any chance, do you know, have, have you been updated in terms of, since it's your precinct, as to a possible completion date?
Of the 10th of construction?
Correct, on 186.
Their, their first phase of it, it's just two phases, is my understanding, the first phase should be completed by end of this year, should be completed by-
So that-
They're, they're doing the, the cement, the cement base stabilizer right now, then they gotta come back and do the hot mix.
Wow, okay, thank you, Commissioner Uranda, Commissioner Precinct Two report from Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Judge, we're basically doing the same thing, keeping up with the grass and cutting all the misty trees that are, that become overgrown, and just doing the repairs we can, we had a maintainer for, for service, he just got back up on, so we're gonna start working back on the roads and blading them. I don't have this, that bad issue that Commissioner Uranda has, but we are trying to improve the roads as it is. Also, for the, for the city's issue, I've done the same thing he does, I got several trades in the city that people keep calling me, and I keep referring them over to the city, and I use the same statement this morning, as we're having a meeting today, we should really, we should know something about it, but now we're back to, as they would say, square one, so we're gonna have the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. We are going to table precinct three, six, and four, five, and seven reports.
Motion to approve one and two, table three and four.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve one and two and table three, six, four, five, and seven.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. 3.16, discussion and appropriate action, consideration approval for landfill to purchase one Polaris, we do have a motion to table.
Judge, I believe Ms. Ms. Miranda was hearing in that, on that behalf, I got a call from, I got a message from, Commissioner Burca.
So Ms. Miranda's gonna present on her behalf?
Yes.
Is that correct, Ms. Miranda?
Good morning, yes. She did send me a message this morning. So, and she didn't want me to tell you that on the consideration to purchase the Polaris for the landfill, that that would be coming out of the COs?
Um, do we have backup for that, Ms. Hernandez? Like, we're, I don't have anything regarding, there was nothing submitted.
Beautiful.
But that's-
They're all here, the Polaris.
Okay, obvious.
Is there buy more than?
Yes.
I have a copy here now, thank you. So she's requesting for them to be purchased through the COs?
Yes.
There's more than one unit?
There's gonna be a total of three items.
But he's asking about the Polaris of A2B?
It's one.
Those are one.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Questions? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.17, discussion and appropriate action, consideration and approval for Road and Bridge Four to purchase a utility storage building for the landfill.
This is what will be out of COs, and this is gonna be to house all the equipment, and weeders and lawn mowers and stuff that they have out there.
So is this coming out of COs for Road and Bridge Four or for the landfill? Do you know?
She didn't expect it by anyone.
It's because you know how on the previous agenda item, it says approval for landfill to purchase, and then this one says approval for Road and Bridge Four to purchase, so my question is, is it gonna be a Road and Bridge?
But I do, they're all COs.
Per COs.
I know, but what I'm at, my question is, is, um, is this gonna be under the ownership of Road and Bridge for, for purposes of his?
It's for the landfill, sorry, it's the, it's potentially whether it's COs, but to be placed on the landfill, so it would be more than likely would be on their, on the landfill equipment list.
Thank you, that's what I was asking. We should've just had you presenting, Commissioner Uranda.
I, I do.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, consideration and approval for Road and Bridge Four to purchase two, two, two Z-track tractors.
Zero turns.
And this is what will come out of her COs.
What did you say, Commissioner?
There's zero turns.
I know, but I was just reading what the item says, it says Z-track.
Z-track is like a bad word, a brand Z-track. Sixteen.
Kabuda?
But for the record, they're zero turns, Ms. McDaniel.
I don't know.
Z-track and kabuda is just the brand.
Kaboda.
Kaboda.
Squeeze me.
How do you pronounce it, Commissioner?
Kaboda.
And you?
Kabuda.
See, I don't know if the only one of them is pronouncing it, one says kaboda, one says kabuda, I was just saying kaboda.
Explain my English, don't call ice.
Don't call ice.
I said, I said, I said it the way you said it, Commissioner Carmona, and our very intelligent commissioner over there corrected me and said kaboda, so-
What did you say, it, cause it's K-U-D-O.
But kaboda, kabuda's, noodles, whatever, or examples. Both said.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Miranda. Thank you.
I can, I, I hate the way they say it, kaboda.
I have a question.
I guess Commissioner Carmona and I are not watching TV, so-
We're working overtime.
Yes, sir. We don't have time, we don't have time to sit down and watch TV.
Yes.
But thank you, thank you for the clarification, kaboda.
I forgot Netflix doesn't have.
3.19, discussion and appropriate action approval for Abed's Drive Change Order, precinct four. I don't have anything on that either, can we have a motion to table?
So, motion.
Oh, second.
Second, motion by Judge Ponce, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.1, law enforcement, discussion and appropriate action approval for Christina Bianueva and Jesus Ruiz to attend the emergency medical dispatch PSAP training, EMD, on August 27, 2025 in Austin, Texas.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.2, discussion and appropriate action, thank you, Ms. Sergeant, Lieutenant, um, Carmona, I apologize.
Good morning.
Um, good morning, Ms. Montes. 4.2, discussion and appropriate action approval for Edmund Montes, Lieutenant Francisco Perez, and Sergeant Arambula. I'm all confused up here with lieutenant, sergeant, Edmund, on this paper, Mr. Carmona, I'm sorry, and Sergeant Joe Arambula to attend the Joe Administration Association Convention September 7th through the 12th in Galveston, Texas. Ms. Montes, you guys are, um, driving in county vehicles or you're going on your own?
On our own vehicles. Well, um, Arambula and Sergeant Arambula and Lieutenant Perez are going together in the vehicle.
But on their own vehicle.
They're going together? Yes, ma'am.
I entertain a motion, if there are no questions?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 4.3, discussion and appropriate action, Joe Status Report. Questions of Ms. Montes? Did you submit a report, Ms. Montes?
Yes, ma'am, I don't see it.
I don't have it.
Yeah, mine, yes, cause I don't, I don't see it in, in our-
Hold it right, hold on.
File. Can I have?
Make it.
Thank you.
Questions of Ms. Montes?
Ms. Montes, the only thing I got was the thing for the, for the marshals. I don't have no, I don't think I have any information.
He means like in terms of like your Joe report, like if you have like a status to give us, like...
Oh, okay.
How's the Joe operating? How's it powering for some?
Right now, I'm working on the walk-in freezer. We have, we have food gathering, so I'm just getting everything together. Also, I'm working with American Association with the fire sprinklers, because they have to work together, because the walk-in cooler has to have the sprinklers in there. So I'm getting all that information.
Commissioner Odena, that's another one of the issues that we're having, because remember that the Joe's not fully with the sprinkler system.
The pressure?
Well, she says that they need to install a sprinkler system.
He already has it on the walk-in cooler, but they're gonna have to take it off and put it back on.
Install it again there themselves.
On your, on the wall?
Yes, yes, sir. It has, the day of ice, and it has to be rendered toward to have one in there.
A sprinkler in the wall?
Yes, sir.
As per Joe standards. So that was another issue that we were discussing with Mr. Pereira regarding those COs, because there's some areas where the sprinkler system's not capable, there's no capability of it right now, so they need to install it.
But there's one already inside the walk-in cooler. I believe this too.
Do they need to replace the A?
They're gonna have to replace everything, since we're gonna get everything new, so I'm getting estimated how much it's gonna be. They're working together, the fresh choice and the American Protection Fire Sprinkler, they're working together. I gave them the phone number.
Trying to actually obsolete, so they're trying to...
Re-do it, yes.
Yes, they probably have to add more, because I think it's gonna be wider.
Any other questions? Now I entertain a motion to approve the Joe status report.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.1, thank you, Ms. Montes, Status Report for Utility. Questions of Mr. Hyman?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hyman. Discussion on Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz, for the month of June 2025.
Morning.
Morning. Mr. Ortiz, by chance, on the top of your head, do you have the number of total employees we have at Dimmitt County?
Not the exact, but a little under 200. Want to say in the 190s? Well, actually, sorry. If we're not including the elected officials, it would be like 160, 170.
That's not including part-timers, right?
That is.
How many?
About 160 to 170 excluding, excluding elected officials, but ballpark.
Full-timers, probably about 120, maybe, roughly.
120?
Full-timers.
Full-timers.
Give or take.
Give or take.
Do you remember how many, ballpark, when you came in?
I want to say it's gone up maybe 10% since I came in, in total employees. So maybe, maybe we gained like 20, 20 employees.
I was gonna say, if I can recall, Commissioner Odena, when I came in, there was about 90-something employees. 90-something. And we're, when I say 90-something, I mean 90-something full-timers.
Now, now I would say it's...
Now we're like at 120 in full-timers. So we've increased about 30 positions, if I'm not mistaken. Questions of Mr. Ortiz? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.2, Discussion on Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from County Auditor, Mr. Carlos Pereira, for the month of June 2025.
Good morning. Total revenues through the end of June, we have, it's on the first page, and the fourth column at the bottom is $21,219,396. And that includes our current revenues, our current taxes, which totaled through the end of June, of $13,759.19. And so through supplements, we're actually 3% above our projected collection. So we actually have collected $127,000 above what we had projected. Our sales tax is currently at $3,478,000, which is also $447,000 above what we projected for the year.
Mr. Pereira, we can just clarify, because I know you and I have gotten some indication or maybe perhaps some false narratives going around within the community or elected officials. Just to clarify, Dimmitt County is not going broke, and Dimmitt County is not losing money.
No, and in fact, we increased our fund balance, and we'll see that, the audit report's coming in. They will be here for the next meeting, but we actually increased it substantially from the previous, from the previous year
Correct.
of our fund balance. So for the last couple of years, we have been increasing the fund balance.
Any other questions of Mr. Pereira? Thank you, Mr. Pereira, for clarifying that for those present and those watching.
Thank you, Mr. Pereira.
Questions? If there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Pereira, County Auditor's Report.
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Jose Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.3, Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval for County Auditor, Mr. Carlos Pereira, to Attend Legislative Conference, August 27 through 29, 2025, in Austin, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Judge Ponce. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.4, Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval to Award Bid for Installation of Emergency Lighting.
The bids were open at the last meeting, and the total amount for that was $133,009.72. And that is...
Nine hundred and what?
I mean, nine dollars and 72 cents. And that's for Alvarado Emergency Lighting for trucks, and it's coming out of the grant.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.5, Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval to Re-advertise for Bids for Remounting of the Dispatch Office.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.6, Discussion on Appropriate Action: Budget Adjustment, Number 70, Between the Airport. The budget adjustment, they're asking for funding to be transferred from Training Professionals Services to Maintenance and Repair of Equipment in the amount of $7,134.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.7, Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval for Budget Amendment, IT Department. I don't know if you guys want to hear it or you want to table it. This was in the case in which Commissioner Talamantes hired a part-time position that was not on the budget last year. And that's why, as you can see, it doesn't say budget adjustment. It has to be an actual amendment, because she is, she hired a part-time position that was not allocated at the beginning of the budget last year. So in order for her to be able to employ, or, I mean, my understanding is that this individual's already employed. However, the process of how it was done needed to be rectified, because there had to be a budget adjustment, since there wasn't a line item for part-time.
Good. May I? I think that that's what the problem is right now, or a concern, not a problem. We used to bring up, we used to have the courtesy of announcing about hiring people, full-time, part-time, temporary, part-time. And now I've noticed that, I've done it, where I put every item on the agenda. But sometimes I notice that we have people working, and there's, and it's hard to keep up with what actually transfers within those departments. And this is an example of what happens. If it would have, if we would have been brought up before the court, and yourselves, then we would have had the option to ask, do you have a line item for that? But recently, like I said, everybody does it however they want, but I always put, if I'm gonna hire somebody, I put them before Commissioner's Court as a courtesy. That way, we know if the line item is not, or if there's funds available, you know. And here, I never heard of a part-time being hired through IT. Not only this department, but other departments.
Right, and that was an oversight on our part, because we thought the, that there was a part-time, and so we didn't bring it up until afterwards.
Well, see, I mean, stuff like this.
But that's what I'm saying. But most of the time, there is a part-time, and so there isn't an issue, a part-time line item, okay? And I think this used to be in there, took it off last year, and so that's why there was an oversight on our part.
I don't, I'm not against a young man working first, but I do have a concern with, or it's kind of, I do have an opinion on how the hiring process.
Yeah, we will check in the future, make sure that it's done.
If something comes up, always call you.
Yes, sir.
And then, and then I place it before Commissioner's Court, and if not, you know, a half hour later.
And like I said, it was an oversight on our part, because we thought there was the line item, and so we didn't bring it up until we checked.
Go ahead.
So following up on what Commissioner Carmona just stated, it is a concern, and I'll tell you why it is a concern to me. Because, and I spoke to you about it last time, this discussion, when you're adding a line item that was not in existence, it's basically, when we go through budget, we approve a budget for every individual.
Department?
Department, right? So if you're adding a line item that wasn't approved previously as an established budget, you're basically saying you can do that, and we really, I don't believe we can do that. Unless you're in a situation like we are now, where if you give the votes, you can do it, correct?
Right.
So obviously, for her to go through all the process of hiring whoever she hired, she had to do a request of, of, a new employee form, and you have to go through the office, through office.
Mr. Ortiz.
At that point, it should have been called that, hey, wait a minute, Commissioner, there's not really a line. Now, I know in the past, we have had positions that are not filled, and we can utilize that amount of whatever is allocated for that position to hire one or two part-timers instead of the full-time position. In this situation, there wasn't even that available, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the...
Currently, we didn't...
In other words, we didn't have any funding there to actually...
She did.
Well, on my side, I was, I was under the understanding for this fiscal year that elected officials were given their money, and then they could divide it as they wanted to. So in this case, the line item that the employees made paid out of, there's money in there to finish this term.
Oh, so there is a line item?
No, there's not a line item. Because what he's doing...
There is a line item.
The CP paid out of the line item, and there's money in there to finish the...
So let's say, for instance, let me just clarify it. So let's say, for instance, there's line item for full-time position one and line item for position two. However, and let's say that's $100,000 for both, right, combined? However, she has $20,000 left, because she's not paying them the full amount, so there's $20,000 left. So she went and hired a third person, but there was no line item for that.
For part-time? No.
There was no part-time line item.
For specifically a part-time.
They just assumed that, because there was $20,000 left, she could hire an additional person. But I don't think that was the intention of the court when we made that decision that the money was gonna be put all together, so that if you have five employees, you can split $100,000 in whatever way that you want. It wasn't to make new positions, and I know that's y'all's concern.
And we, we had never, until this year, had created a line item for an employee in the middle of the budget. We always told all the other elected officials, you cannot do that, because the budget is already set. Even though the money's there...
I don't think any of us have been able to...
Right. And you've been here, when you say it...
I know.
Hold on, let me, wait. You've been here, when you yourself say you cannot interact in the, with the, in the middle of the budget, which means that if there's no line item that is left, left for the next budget to come in, if it's gonna, if the court decides to do something of another line item. Because other, and I reemphasize this, other elected officials have come during the middle of the budget and wanting to hire people, and we tell them no, because what's said for payroll for employees is already set. Not because I have a billion dollars and three-quarters of it is for payroll, that doesn't mean that, and I don't go through the $3 million or whatever it is, that doesn't give me the right to create a line item to pay that, because the money's just there for you to have. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to use it.
Yes, Commissioner, but last year, you all approved the budget.
You get what I say, right?
No, I understand what you're saying, but you all basically changed the rules in saying that, basically, just like Mr. Ortiz said, that basically you have a certain amount that you can spend it with. My understanding was as many employees as you could without going over budget.
That's not...
The raises.
There was, there was a raise, how it was gonna split.
Yes, exactly. That's not how we...
But that's why we're coming back to coming and correcting this and saying, okay, that was a misunderstanding. We're gonna do it this way.
But again, we don't create line items for it.
It's just a bad practice. It feels like it's a bad practice, because given the purpose of approving a budget, if we're gonna change it, we go, see what I'm saying?
And here, we just open a can, because somebody else can come in and say, I'm gonna hire somebody part-time, I don't have a line item, but let's amend it.
That's true.
It's gonna open a can.
Going forward, we will, okay, but that's...
We can't say no, because we're allowing it.
But technically, this year, there's, before this fiscal year, there used to be a list of all the employees and how many employees you can have. This year, that got taken off, and you were just given a blank amount. Because I was also under the understanding that you could divide it as many times as you want. Because I remember asking that... you want, because I remember asking that question.
And I was being told, I was being told by him, and...
That's before.
And I'm pretty sure some emphasizes that the money's there, that doesn't mean because, again, if you have money there, that doesn't mean you're going to spend it, because that money goes back into the general fund, and it makes, it doesn't make you go over budget or anything like that.
And that's still the case, but basically, last year, my understanding...
There was no, it was a raises. It was just a raises.
No, but it was no specific...
If we were going to go a certain amount, if you wanted to pay your employee a certain increase, you would pay it and give the other employee the rest or whatever it was. But in all fairness, you know, it was split it evenly on my part.
Yes, because we had some officials that wanted to give a certain employee $2, but they wanted to give another employee 50 cents, you remember?
Yes.
And somebody 75. So, what we said, because we didn't want the employees to think that we were kind of condoning that and saying like, "Okay, only you deserve two and they deserve a dollar." What we agreed was that we were going to give a total raise to an amount for those positions that were there, and then they could, exactly, the commissioners could disperse them how they please. So, Commissioner Uranda wanted to pay one of his employees, give him a dollar raise, he could, and then if he wanted to give the other one based on whatever his quality performance, whatever, 50 cents, then he would. It wasn't a matter, it wasn't about adding more positions, because I think that defeats the purpose.
But I think we did discuss it, and then basically, there was no...
I have a quick question. Does she, does the Commissioner have any other areas where she could allocate this employee for, until budget, until the Nick budget, and pay him?
I mean, she's got full-time positions.
She had full-time positions?
Available. I mean, she has, money's available on that, and that's what is...
And you put them under there, and...
Yeah, like if she...
That's what it is.
But they're filled, the full-time positions.
He's talking about in another department.
Like in her road bridge, does she have a part-time or a full-time position that she can allocate this person to that and pay him out of there?
Put him under the road bridge.
That's kind of hard to answer because there's no list of how many employees each elected official.
No, no, but we all have a list of how many positions we have available.
No.
There's not, there's not.
Yes, because I think you bring it out, Mr. Pereda.
The only thing that we're auditing right now is the number, whatever you're paying them, and to make sure that basically projected to the end of the year, you're not going to go over.
No, what I'm talking about, if they have open positions or not, there's no more list of positions for each department. It's just a total...
Well, there is a list, because he's given us a list, and it has the names of who's there, because there's a list.
Yes, but we keep track of it.
There should be a...
So, like every time somebody gets added, they get put on that list.
There should be, there should be a... If you really look at this on the broadside, if precinct one is supposed to have four positions, there should be a list for four positions.
Correct.
And, and a number allocated to...
That's the way it was before.
Because I can't, I, if that, you're giving me the option, so to speak, I could say, "You know what? I'm going to get rid of my two highest-paid employees and open myself a gap where I can hire three with the same budget." And in reality, I don't have the extra position, but you're giving me that option this way. If you have four positions and you have this much money to deal with those four positions, and that's it, that's the way it should really be, in my opinion, established.
I agree. And then whatever monies was given, just separates amongst those positions.
But you're coming back to this position for Commissioners' Court would approve the number of positions and the amounts.
But it doesn't make sense, because I'm going to give you an example.
I mean, that's what the...
We have a department that has a budget for a supervisor, call it a supervisor, and I think it's budgeted like $90,000 for that one position. If this department doesn't hire that person at $90,000 and hires them at $40,000, $50,000, that, that given, that person the ability to say, "Well, I'm going to hire another person, and I have more hands on deck," so to speak. In other words, if the position's not there, you should not be able to hire. You see what I'm saying? Now, by the same token, if you have a full-time position and it's not filled, and you, you said it, you can make two part-timers out of that one full-time, because you're getting paid out of that one position. It's not filled either way.
Well, see, that's the way the part-time is. If you have $20,000, you can hire up to five people.
But there's no $20,000 on that line. On that department.
But that's the way, basically, that our understanding was, that you're going to do it last time.
Because he's saying that if you have $20,000 in part-timers, you can hire five part-timers, as long as you don't go over your $20,000.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right. Because we're not really buying position.
It exists at the IT.
Granted, but the same, I guess, theory follows with the full-time, because there is nothing in the budget that proves a number of positions. You're giving an amount. I mean, if you all want to...
I take my concern with, I understand we're in a predicament here, but this, this, my, my question to you is, if this happens to me next year, are you going to come before Court and request that I get an extra line item?
If you have the money to move around?
Or we'll go through the same process.
If, if nothing changes, then no, but if something does change, then yes.
Well, I think what Commissioner Uranda's, what Commissioner Uranda's trying to say is that this is bad practice, like, and there's no point of even having a budget if we're just going to come throughout the year whenever we want to, and just, if we have, if their votes are there, you just go get a new position. You know what? Tomorrow, I'm going to put on the agenda for next week that I want a position, and, and if the, I mean, what he's trying to say is, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and what he's saying is if he comes next Commissioners' Court, August 14, and says, "I want another position," he's, he's saying, "You better give it to me." If, if the votes are there to vote, you better give it to me because you gave it to somebody else, you have to give it to me, and it defeats the purpose of having a budget, because if you're going to just make changes throughout the year, an amendment, then there's no point in having a budget. If that's, if I'm correct.
The deal is in the budget, there is no place that says you have five positions, you have three positions or under full-time. There is, we don't have anything anymore. We used to, we do not have anymore.
We do have it.
Nope, you don't.
We used to, but not this year.
And how come we don't?
Because you all, that's the way you all voted.
It was only for the salary.
Only the salary.
No, because you all can't dictate, okay? Or you would dictate the amount, the money that we're going to get, and the positions. You're not doing that anymore.
My recommendation...
I never done it?
My recommendation to the Commissioner would be, and I believe she does have a position or two available, and probably within her road bridge.
The boy's leaving at the end of the weekend.
Did he at the end of the week? So, how does he think it's being?
Because he's in the same line item as IT, that there's money in it.
So, you really don't need, even need to...
That, that's what I'm trying to say. Like, I forgot exactly how much there was, right? But let's say there was $50,000. All $50,000 wasn't used, so what was left over was used for this part-timer, for the short amount of time that the employees here.
Okay, so it's handled.
Right.
I'd rather just get it handled that way now than to go through this process and make it twice as bad. I don't feel that, if it's unnecessary, why are we amending the budget?
Because there was no line item, and that's what y'all, that's what y'all requested from Commissioner Talamantes last time. That's what Commissioner Talamantes put it on here, because that's what was...
That's what she said, that's what Mr. Pereda...
Yeah, because it basically is a part-time.
Because he's saying it is a part-time, so technically, it's not supposed to be paid from the full-time.
But I would argue the budget just says personnel, so I don't see why it needs to be...
If that's, if that's, then you're right. I mean, because after we just put together, then if it just says personnel, it doesn't say how many. I see what you're saying now.
But I do, but I do agree for next year, we should go back to have a...
But I think that it should have been like that. I don't know where Mr. Pereda, and I'm not trying to, to disrespect you or your office, but I don't know where you got the sentiment that that's the, that you should take away all positions, because whenever it was done here, at least, I'm going to say my opinion, when we did the budget last year, I think that the position, that my opinion was that we're adding the raise as a whole, but you still have five full-times, you still have five apart-times, you still have whatever, it wasn't made for you to just, "Okay, we're going to give you a total amount, get rid of all the positions." That's oxymoron. It doesn't make any sense.
It was brought up, and that's what the answer was.
I don't think so.
Yes, it was.
I don't think so.
It was brought up.
I don't, I don't recall being like, yes, I don't recall it being like that, and if it, if it was that way, I think that, I'll speak on my behalf, I can't speak on behalf of the other Commissioners, but on my behalf, I don't think that those were the sentiments that I was trying to put out there, because it doesn't make any sense for us to, "Well, let's just wash away with the positions," but right now, Commissioner Uranda could have 30 in his road and bridge. Exactly.
That's what we have in this issue right here.
I just, I don't, I mean, I have monies left over, and going back to what Commissioner Carmona said, thank you very much, because I will yell it at the top of my tongue, at the top of my lungs all the time, that just because we have $100,000 doesn't mean we have to spend $100,000. We want to be financially conservative, so at the end of the year, we're always financially sound, which you've told us we are with the audit we had, which is, thank, thank God, and that's great. But I can tell you on my end, as the judge Commissioners, if y'all look at my budget, like, one of my budget items is for one of my staff members. I've been able to, be able to pay her off of a grant where the county doesn't spend that money, but I could have hired two, three other people with that, but I didn't do that because I was under the understanding that we have positions, you know what I mean? Like, I didn't know that. This is the first time I'm hearing it, Mr. Pereda.
But I'm glad we know. That way, we can clarify that and...
Correct.
Yeah, correct. So, I would have the same thing. Or this is the same thing.
Should be allowed to protest, I guess.
So, if it's handled, then this is...
This, this situation did not put IT to go over the personnel, but...
I have a motion to take over, take no action, actually. Well, let me ask you now, Mr. Pereda, since you advised Commissioner Talamantes as what Commissioner Uranda says, to put an amendment, is it required by law that we have to make an amendment? Because I don't want to not follow the law. If we have to have an amendment, then we have to have an amendment. Because he's saying that, she told you that he said, or what, what do you?
No, no, no. The last, the last time we met here, there was a discussion that, and she had spoken to Mr. Pereda, and Mr. Pereda recommended.
So, are you recommending, as our auditor, that we do a line item budget amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So legally, we have to do it then. It's his advice. And I, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Uranda, it's bad practice, but... I mean, the only thing, the only thing that I can think of is if you don't want to approve it, then they'll have to take out that money from the general fund.
From this?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be taken out of the general fund, it would just be taken out of, let's say it was 10, let's say it was $5,000. $5,000 would come out of that IT and get created a new one. Like, it's the same amount of money, just a different one.
And you, you, you have, you all have no way of knowing whether she has an open position in any road, correct?
We can, but I'd have to go back and check. I don't know.
But, but at that point, it would just be back, I'm pretty sure, very, she does have open positions, but at that point, it's just backtracking. We're just going to have to undo something. But I don't see how I would have this situation.
Can we say just for this time?
Whatever the Court wants to do, I just want to make sure that we do it properly because...
Can we just say for this time and...
An exception?
An exception? And we'll do it again?
Again?
To make the motion to amend the budget this particular time, make an exception to keep everybody clear.
I keep what?
I get the same opportunity.
Get it ever happen again, I tell you.
I mean, you just don't approve it the next time, because it's, just because you...
But see, that's what we're trying to avoid, that's what I'm trying to avoid because...
It may not be fair, but just because you approve it once, doesn't mean after it will be done.
But that's what we're trying to avoid because...
Exactly, right?
No one is going to come back and say, "It's, it's, it's okay," no, it's not fair. You did it for...
But we're in July, and if y'all are going to change it for the next budget, we shouldn't have any more problems.
We should go through the clarification process, so we don't run into...
It's already in the...
Oh, you said what your motion?
Motion to approve this one time for a particular reason, and hopefully, we don't run into this situation again.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 6.8, Discussion and appropriate action, Budget Adjustment Number 79, Between the General Department, for overtime.
Budget adjustment?
Yes, they, they, and basically, we told them they need to do it because they're having problems in the jail with their overtime, and so they've exceeded what we have budgeted.
So, they're asking for, there's a transport deputy position that, I guess, has been vacant, and they have extra money for a transport deputy, and they're asking for it to be transferred over to $16,000 in overtime, $10,000 for training and travel, and then $1,000 for inmate transports, and $1,000 for kitchen.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Claim docket, General Fund, $603,692.46. Dimon County Airport, $3,349.30. Dimon County Golf Course, $11,351.67. Courthouse Security, $4,039.88. Records Management Clerk, $1,417.26. Utilities, $61,272.4. Rodeo Arena, $850. Stone Garden, $36,701.66. Operation Lone Star Program, $2022, $46,191.51. Dimon County Payroll, $358,444.20. Tax Note Series, $17,985, oh, excuse me, I read that, $282,259.30. SB 2022, $13,382.38. Mr. Pereda, on the tax note series, I suppose that's where the PSI invoices comes in for the pressure services of the sports complex, general border patrol, that they did those testing. I didn't see it on here. Is it because you ran this?
Because it probably already been through the papers.
No, because we just approved the PO last week, so this is a late printout. It's not the most recent printout, right?
This is the version today.
Can I, can I request this Commissioners' Court to approve it with contingent for Mr. Pereda to add the amounts of the, of the PSI, the cat amount for the sports complex?
How much is that?
I don't have it on the top of my head, but it's at the, to the office.
Because I think we...
It wasn't at the last one, because it just got approved, but I guess your staff is not the most current one. So, can I get a motion that include the cat amount, Mr. Commissioners, and the PSI? He doesn't have it on here.
Just give us enough, I will give it to you all this afternoon.
Because I approved the PO, Commissioner Uranda, last week, but I did, but it was, it's not included in here, because this is not the most current printouts.
Motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
So, later than bye. So later than five.
The court is going to recall item six point four on financial, just for the record, to verify that the approval to award the bid for installation emergency lighting, there was a additional amount, because there was two, two quotes for the lighting, one in the amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand and nine dollars and seventy-two cents, the other amount is sixty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighty-six cents, and that's...
Yes, that's what I was about to ask, if, if I could go back to that, 'cause I know that y'all already approved for the O L S one, but there was two different ones, one for four trucks and one for two trucks. Four were from the overtime, and two were from Commissioner Carmona. So that's what we were wondering about, the other two, however, and, if that was to get approved, that's what all the purple wasn't.
Mr. Pereira, that's my distinct understanding, that they're all being, all the lighting is being purchased through the O L S, correct?
No. There was only four vehicles, four O L S, and two were bought through, through the Commissioner. So those two have nothing to do with the O L S.
Okay, and that's why they're...
That's, that's, the lighting was...
That's why I was doing this.
So you're paying for the lighting?
Yes, that's what we got.
Yes.
Agreed on.
I just wanted to clarify, so then it's gonna get to this one?
Yes, that's what you're gonna do. Good doing on that.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Yeah, here you go, Ms. McDaniel, thank you for that clarification. And that was just to add the additional funding to the minutes of the record. Mrs. McDaniel, the motion is still in place by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Odena, and passed by three votes, to include the judges' vote. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The time is twelve fourteen, and I am going to call the public facilities meeting to order at twelve fourteen P M. Roll call, let the ref reflect that Commissioner Odena, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Judge, County Judge Ponce are present, and we do have two absences to include Commissioner Juli Salamantes and Commissioner Valerie DuCava. We do have a quorum, so we can proceed with the meeting, one point through three approval minutes, July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five.
So, no.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries two point one, discussion appropriate action, new business. I am going to table the item, Commissioner Talamantes is in the favor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries three point one, discussion in appropriate action, monthly report. We do have the report from Mr. Pereira that indicates the revenues over expenditure. Commissioner Carmona is saying for you to talk to him.
What?
No, I'm just leaving.
He's saying, like, "Talk to me." Any questions?
Motion to...
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Mr. Pereira, for the Middle Rio Grand, is there a position available for that?
Yes. There's a maintenance position.
Yes, is not filled yet?
No. I've been utilizing my gentleman to go and help cut grass. Commissioner Carmona has been helping me, sending some of his guys to go cut grass, but there is a position available. We just haven't utilized it.
So then, like, for the, the elderly nutrition center, there's not a position for that?
No.
What's the difference?
Commissioner Juan Carmona would send his gentleman over there.
Okay, so, but are we still gonna, is it gonna still be that like this thing?
However you all decide, that's up to you all.
Yes, sir.
Well, no, you all, you all agree at the end, at the end you all agree.
What are you talking about, Commissioner Carmona?
Because it's two different buildings, right? And the work is basically the same, cutting grass.
But we don't have a line item for the...
Why?
There was never a line item for the...
So why do we have one for one, but we don't have the other?
There was not a line item for the C S A.
I understand, why? We, if we're looking at two different buildings, why do we have a line item for one and not for the other?
Because the Commissioner would take his people from his budget.
The Commissioner would take it.
From his budget and take care of it.
So, just for, let me clarify for you.
Juan would take his people, go take care of what?
To cut the grass.
Not true, I've been doing it since it opened.
The C S A?
Yes.
Really?
That's what I'm asking.
But that's fine, but, and thank you very much.
No, I'm asking why? Thank you for going to get me to the door, but why? Why Juan has a position, the other one doesn't, and I'm just...
Because it put in, because it was put in that, it was put in the building as part of that. The C S A, the C S A...
Does she have a position now?
Basically, C S A is taking care of itself.
No, how?
Well, they're supposed to be taken care of.
They, they, they...
It's the same thing, but if they have a contract, they have a contract.
No, they're paying us money.
Yes.
To...
And the C S A program's not paying them?
No, we give them money.
Then we don't meet them?
No, Commissioner Odena, we would approve that.
They're paid to the squad.
Yes. The C S A, the C S A, we give them over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We don't give Middle Rio Grand money. Middle Rio Grand and the Dollar General pay us. So we have a position there.
Oh, and we bought that building, that's right.
Correct, 'cause we bought the building, so we're the landlord, and we go and, and get the grass cut there. And so I had a position for a maintenance individual for that, for the Middle Rio Grand. However, I have not filled it, 'cause Commissioner Carmona has been kind enough, and I also have sent some of the guys on my department to go and cut the grass, when Commissioner Odena, Carmona can't help. They're at, at the Middle Rio Grand, yes, I don't know about C S A, but at the...
No, we've been cutting it.
Yeah, no, at the, at the Middle Rio Grand, Commissioner Carmona has helped to go cut the grass. He sent some of his guys, and then I've had some of the guys...
As a matter of fact, we added the Patriot Building.
I guess Commissioner DuCava asked him.
Yes, right, and we added the... So we, we cut basically very, here in this general area, with the exception of, of...
The chamber home?
No, well, the chambers and, because, uh, there's the Middle Rio Grand, it's a judge, but it's a judge who calls out...
Yes. Why, what's, what's, what's your issue, Commissioner?
I don't have an issue with it, I had a question. Could be an issue, but it's just...
What was it?
Is it, I don't know, yeah. I don't understand both of you.
His men has moved commissions worth.
It has, really?
Thank you, Mr. Pereira.
So, you're gonna second it or?
Uh, I'll, yes, I'll be waiting on you.
I apologize. I apologize. Commissioner Carmona.
Who's?
Commissioner Carmona has his jokes today. He says, "So you're gonna second it or what?" Commissioner. So, are you gonna second it?
I do.
Yes. We have a second, Ms. McDaniel, by Commissioner Odena. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two, claim docket, public facility, six thousand, sixty-six dollars.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the public facilities meeting. I have a motion by Commissioner Odena, I mean Commissioner Carmona. Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, this meeting has ended, thank you all.